Good evening and welcome to the March 6, 2025 Sammamish Planning Commission meeting. Let's get started with roll call. Ajay Chakrapani.
Here.
Hesham Milkawad.
Here.
I am Mark Baughman and I'm here. John Bachman.
Here, but my button's missing.
Sudha Sankara.
Here.
We have our student representative, Hongyang Wang.
Here.
Mike Bresko is not here this evening and Sayed Safavian is not here this evening. Okay, next, let's approve the agenda for the evening. Tonight, we're talking about a couple items on SMC 21 and also a little discussion on the Planning Commission bylaws. Anybody have anything to change on the agenda? Nope, we'll call the agenda approved. Next is approval of the meeting minutes from our February 20 meeting. Anybody have any corrections to the February 20 meeting minutes? No corrections to the February 20 meeting minutes, so we'll call those approved. Next, we will do non-agenda public comment. I mentioned the SMC 21 discussion and the Planning Commission bylaws, so anybody wants to make public comment? Otherwise, now's the time, three minutes per person.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. It's Paul Stickney, Sammamish. Going to talk about, you know, the two-year, biennial budget. And I'm going to make a statement upfront, and I talked to city council about this on Tuesday. I'm not trying to be negative, I'm trying to paint an entire picture. I strongly am advocating for adding some market rate housing to this year's comp plan with numbers I've shared to build alongside with affordable housing, to work on an ailment in Sammamish, which is housing being out of balance, just like our fiscal insustainability out of balance on the budget. And I've been tracking meetings for 10 years, and I'm not throwing any stones, I'm just sharing some things I have observed. I have observed over seven budget cycles, the staff has increased approximately 45% on a per 1,000 population in Sammamish. I have no judgment on that, it's just a fact. The magnitude of spending per person in Sammamish, adjusted for cost of living and inflation, has gone up 28% that same cycle. Again, no comment from me, just a fact. Stormwater fees in seven years have gone up 225% and are now charging $475 per household in Sammamish on average. Starting in 2020, you know, 10 years of banked capacity for taxes was taken, along with taxes every year, which is adding some $5 million to the budget, which is about 250 per household. 6% utility tax is forecast to be roughly 550 a household. Again, just facts. The amount of development revenues has gone down, we all know this, with very little single-family and not much multifamily for five years. Interestingly enough, the city spent about $14 million a year on capital, and that's up through 2022. I don't know how it's been since then, and capital money was, or money from the general fund was transferred into capital up until 2015 at about $7 million a year. I don't know since 2019. The long and the short of it is, spending and taxes are up and revenues are down, and I believe authentic B and C housing added to A is a solution for the long term. Appreciate the chance to speak, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody online?
Yes, we have Mary Wickler waiting online. Mary, I am going to move you over to panelists.
I wanted to say I pretty much ditto everything Paul Stickney said. I think he always has good topics and he's incredibly well researched, so I hope that some of it was meaningful to you. The only thing I'll differ with him on is he said on average, the single-family home, or excuse me, any dwelling pays $475 for stormwater fees. It's actually the same fee for any dwelling or any structure, so you could have a tiny little cabin, or you could have a $6 million mansion, you pay the same fee. But it's a fee, not a tax, and it's collected with your King County taxes. The other thing I wanted to talk about is why do you always hear from Paula? Mary, are we crazy? Do we have nothing else to do? Is this our vacation spending with you? And the answer is no. The answer is, is if you are aware of something and it either impacts you or the area you live in, you try to advocate. I've advocated for things most of my life and done a lot of volunteer and also run nonprofits, but the area I live in just has a lot of special needs that haven't been recognized by the city, and over a period of years, I've gotten some changes made. And really, the only thing that you can do is if there's something wrong, you can come and express to one of the, any one of the commissions, or you can write in, and maybe that gets it off your chest, but it doesn't do a lot of action. You have to attend meetings, you have to learn, you have to research, and then you hope for action. And if you can't get changes made, they used to allow only comprehensive plan updates, and I had pushed that, and when Miriam Leitner had learned about it, she said, oh, we need to be able to do text amendments too. So a text amendment is where an individual person can say, hey, I want this word changed or this sentence added, or this whole little segment added. But to do that, you can do it any time of year, you can do it online now, but by the first of, the first Monday in August, it gets wrapped up for the year, and then those become the docket processes. And then there's two parts of the docket, you have to get it submitted, and then you have to get it approved, and if you get it approved, it usually doesn't happen for a year. And then even if it's approved, like TDRs, for instance, for development rights, you might be told, hey, we can't do that because we have limited staff, limited budget, and what we need to do is wait until critical areas come in, because that gives us time planning, we get money from the GMA. So I've done all that. I got stormwater code changes done in 2016 when you had to update, those were effective 2017. There was a lot of public feedback. By 2019, we were able to get some stormwater code changes. I was part of a citizen advisor group for development reg phase two, we got some more changes that were added. And the reason I stick with it is I'm still waiting for things that have been known in the past that need to get done, like transfer of development rights, and seeing if we get those on. So one of the reasons we need public comment is to be able to tout the things that need to get done, and then we have to stick with it apparently for decades, because that's what Paula and I have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? All right. Let's move on to our business items for this evening. I didn't mention this before, but we do have a public hearing scheduled for the first item on the agenda. So our first item of new business is some discussion and then a public hearing on some, as described, minor, more minor amendments to SMC Title 21.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Planning Commission. Just for the record, my name is Evan Fisher with Community Development and here to walk you through these changes. Just as a bit of background, you'll probably recall, right as we were wrapping up the comprehensive plan update, at the end of the year, that we said we would likely need to come back and do some cleanup changes, some cleanup code changes. So we submitted a docket request, the Planning Commission reviewed that, and recommended to the council. The council approved a resolution to set the docket for these types of cleanups. So the goal here tonight is really to ensure that there is alignment between the development regulations and the outcomes we're seeing from the application of our code with the comprehensive plan. So sort of to set the stage on the first two work plan items, this first work plan, or the first item on our work plan tonight, the public hearing items, these are very straightforward. These are ones where we felt it's safe to group a workshop and a public hearing together, because as you probably saw when reviewing the exhibit and as we go through them, there's not a lot of discretion here. They're very straightforward cleanup items. The next work session, the second part of the agenda, are ones that still fall into the cleanup category, but there's more room for discussion, and they might result in a bit more red line changes. So that second group that we're going to do, there's some of those items that we'll lead a discussion with you guys, we want to get your input to know what code changes to make. So hopefully that helps set the stage for the night. And give me just a second, and I will share my screen and we'll get rolling on the public hearing items. Okay, it's a little small, I'll try to zoom in here. Unfortunately, there was really no great way to put these in a pretty slide deck, I think this is the most efficient way to go through these. But there are 10 of these minor code cleanups that, again, we feel like there isn't a whole lot of discretion here, just code cleanups we need to get done and have the commission review.
Lena, is there a way to pin this so that we don't have the column on the side?
Hmm, it's okay, there isn't. Follow host view? I don't know. It's fine that there isn't. Yeah.
Yep, no worries. No, that's fair, it's showing up a little small, and I can zoom in a little bit more and scroll as needed. So the first item here is the moving buildings section in SMC 2109. 120 is duplicative of the same text in Title 16, which is actually the Buildings in Construction chapter of the SMC, so we recommend just scratching it from Title 21 and letting it be governed by Title 16. The second item is, again, very straightforward, a subsection in 2103 is incorrectly labeled as general development standards when it should be landslide hazard development standards. Number three, in 2104020, there is, it describes what is mapped on the city zoning map, and included in that table are items like the special district overlay or the middle housing overlays, which aren't mapped. The special district overlays is something that's been in there maybe since we, David, maybe from when we rolled it over from King County. It's a legacy item, it's not mapped anywhere. And middle housing overlays aren't necessarily, they're not mapped, they're just regulations that apply to existing zones. So we're recommending just cleaning up these items, scratching those from the map designations tables, and then removing the section here that describes the special district overlay and the middle housing overlay in the code. The next item is we don't have a definition for home size, so the recommendation is to add that definition as the gross square footage of a single-family residence. The next is a missing definition for hardscape coverage, so we're recommending that hardscape coverage be defined as any impervious surface area, any impervious surface area covered with gravel or other material that is not vegetation, area that precludes the growth of vegetation, and areas under overhangs that exceeds 18 inches. The next item is a definition for footprint, and we're proposing a two-dimensional outline of a structure or building where it intersects or covers the ground surface, including upper story eaves and cantilevers where they cover an overhang or ground surface. Next is a missing definition for demolition, so removal of more than 50% of a structure, and I'll maybe skip reading the rest of that to you. Clarification, number eight, is clarification for nonconformance for the creation continuation and forfeiture of nonconformant status. And this subsection, and David, I might ask you to better describe it if needed, but basically we're including instances of when a structure is demolished, and David, do you have anything more to add to that to clarify?
I think the challenge here is that we have fairly liberal legal nonconforming status allowances in our code, and that when somebody is purposely demolishing their structure to build a new one, is the time when you should be bringing your structure into compliance with the current standards. So what this is doing is it's simply clarifying that you are forfeiting your legal nonconforming status if you are demolishing the structure under the definition of demolition.
Okay, next, in the R1 zone, the requirement in SMC 2102 states that a subdivision or short subdivision have a minimum of 50% of the site held in permanent open space tract, and I believe, David, the case is that this was found to be not conforming with state law.
That's correct. We have been challenged on this one, and we have a legal interpretation and finding that it is not in compliance with RCW 8202020.
So we propose, we will scratch that. And then lastly, for this section of code cleanups, is Chapter 2111, it contains just a handful of definitions, I think there are eight of them, and we propose, instead of having this little chapter of standalone definitions, that they be rolled into the rest of the definitions that are found in 210404OB. So I'll stop there, ask if there are any questions, and if not, that's the first batch.
Go ahead, John.
Going back to the gross square footage, could you remind me what that includes? For example, does it include an unfinished basement?
Yeah, I would say no, it does not include an unfinished basement. The challenge here with this, and I'd ask Sam to chime in on this one as well, so if you haven't met Sam, this is Sam Dunlap, he's one of our planners, he does a lot of plan review, current planning, he's also working on his MPA right now, so he's really interested in some policy things as well. So welcome, Sam. This is the Planning Commission. So we wanted Sam to be here today to help answer any questions you might have about how he actually applies this stuff on a day-to-day basis. The question about the gross square footage is a really good one. This is one where, does it include garages? Does it include attics? Does it include unfinished basements? These are the types of questions we get from architects all the time, and I don't know, Sam, if you have an opinion on that, or how, you know, what your preference would be, and how you deal with this?
Yeah, I think we're primarily seeking a definition to home size, because there's two parts of the code that essentially deal with home size. One of them is in regards to the dynamic setbacks in the R4 and R6 zones. That one, we don't have an actual definition for home size, so that, then looking at the other aspect in the code that uses home size is the floor-to-area ratio calculation, and that actually goes into depth in defining what is floor area in regards to that floor area ratio calculation. So that includes the gross floor area of the house, including your garage, also including any basement that has an exterior wall that goes three feet above from the average existing grade. So there have been certain instances in that, yeah, I guess determining home size, there was a previous understanding of what home size was, that was maybe conditional space or conditioned space, and then floor-to-area came in with the 2022 code update, and so there's a bit of confusion out there in explaining this to architects, developers.
So part of the reason I ask this question is, the in lieu fee limit right now is 1,000 square feet, and how that plays together with this definition.
So I will, I'll turn it back on you, and I'll ask you, as a group, what your preference would be in measuring home size. There's a few considerations here. One is, when measuring gross square footage and home size, we're talking about the volume of a home. So that has been an issue in the past in public comment and in community conversations, and we did address that in Development Regs Phase 1 and Phase 2, where we are really trying to bring down the overall volume of home sizes that we're seeing, because it can have a real big effect on a change in the community design. So one of the things we've been working really hard to achieve as a community is to try to bring down home sizes, but still allow creative ways for architects to get more space in homes, more living space, right? But also bring the size of the structure down. Those are at times at odds with each other, so you could, for example, say, the gross square footage of a single-family residence, including all livable space and garage, I think that would be a fair thing. But then you'll end up, you could potentially end up with larger vaulted spaces like unfinished basements or attics, which are counting towards the perceived volume that a, from the vantage point of, you know, I don't know what I'm trying to say, somebody looking at the house is going to see that the house is bigger, right? So I think what we're saying here is we want to count all the space in the house, because that ultimately results in the volume of the home. The feedback we've heard from the community is that people don't want these huge boxes in their neighborhoods. So where's the balance point on that? This is something that is an ongoing community conversation, and architects really want to know how to answer this question, because they want to design a home for their customer and not have to redesign it after submitting an application. So, you know, there's the question of, does it include garage space? Does it include unfinished basement? Does it include a vaulted attic? So if you could narrow it down for us as to what you think you might want, our recommendation is to just throw everything in there, because that ultimately kind of closes the door to, you know, if you exclude the garage, well, now you've got a five-car garage attached to the home, and the box is enormous. So our goal is to bring down the volume of a home, but still provide the flexibility to provide living space within the home to meet the property owner family, you know, the resident's needs. Hopefully that helps somewhat.
It does, and it brings me back to the 1,000-foot, and I realize that's not part of this amendment, but to the in lieu fee, 1,000-foot, square-foot gross building, you wouldn't be able to have a garage. I mean, maybe you could have an unfinished, well, depending on how you define the basement. Basements are kind of rare around here, although I have one. So, you know, the yin and the yang of how this all fits together. Just wanted to ask that question.
I think I'll just interject quickly, that fortunately, one of the other things we'll be discussing tonight is that exemption criteria in the square footage in the Affordable Housing chapter, and if 1,000 square feet is appropriate, or if that should be increased to allow for slightly bigger units, so.
I would just, since you brought that up, John, I'll just pile on and say that I, to me, there's sort of the two issues. One is, how should we define gross? But then the other one is, if we're making this change, aren't we just replacing one unknown definition with another unknown definition? My question really was, is gross square footage defined someplace else? So then when we use the term here, somebody could go find it somewhere else in the code. That, to me, seems like we should maybe not change it here, but, you know, make a note that says somewhere we have to define this term, and then we could have the debate about that and put it in someplace.
You could make a recommendation as part of the, after the hearing, that you would add, that the staff also add a definition for gross square footage that includes all of the square footage of a home. The other thing that I've come across, I used to do a lot of plan review, is the argument with architects about whether you're measuring from the exterior wall or the interior wall. You know, and at the end of the day, if they can eke out a couple hundred square, extra square feet, it makes a big difference. So, you know, if you were defining gross square feet, I'd want to narrow it down to that as well, and also get feedback on what, where should we measure it from, inside or outside the wall?
Yeah, those are the ones that I've been working in the commercial world, and gross net rentable and all that kind of stuff. Okay, anybody else have anything on this for questions? Okay, thanks. So remember, we're going to do a public hearing, so we'll take public comment, then someone can make a motion, we'll have a discussion and decide what we want to recommend to the city council. So let's do the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone want to make comments on these, let's call them minor, SMC Title 21 code revisions?
You bet.
Go ahead, Paul.
Got some stuff to help. Hello, Planning Commissioners. It's Paul Stickney, Sammamish. Appreciate learning about the R1 change, because that kind of caught me by surprise, I didn't know about the lawsuit, so appreciate that, because that will change what gets built on R1 for the future, but that was caused by the state. I've been in real estate a long time, and let me bring you a real estate perspective on square footage and a little twist. Maybe none of these will be appropriate for code, maybe they all will be. For years, our industry worked mostly on exterior measurements only. So appraisers would measure a house, and they would always measure a garage and give us two different sizes. When we would mark it, we'd show square footage as livable and the garage size as well. And the appraisal sketches included all floors on independent lines and then totaled it all up, and the appraisers noted whether it was unfinished or finished. Now, King County has to throw a odd monkey wrench in that catches some agents off guard. When you have a split level or a modified tri where there's living space over a, you know, garage, King County only excludes the amount of the garage that isn't under the square footage above. They still haven't fixed that. It's confusing, but I wouldn't worry yourself with that, but when I work on a split entry house, I have to figure out how much of the house is over part of the garage, because King County pretends the line goes down. But that's the only anomaly to size. Now, in the last couple years, Matterports have become a common factor in housing. It's a 2D and 3D camera where these guys come in and set up this cool camera that keeps things square, it doesn't overexaggerate perspective too often, because I hate that, I like what you see is what you get unless things I have, I don't want it to be better or worse than it is. But that software computes interior net size, so it's always interesting to see the 2D renderings that come when you order a Matterport, and I've done a little bit of work, not on all of them, but I would say a range. I would say that the interior net measurements, because this stuff is precise, is from a low of 5% to a high of 10% in the difference between net and gross, which leads me to what Commissioner Bachman talked about, John, and what I've talked about at city council, and now's the time to just mention it here because of this gross, you know, that you're changing the term here. But the question is, in the housing affordable fee and lieu approach to size, which is not the same as the two things that were mentioned here, there's two things in conflict with each other. The square footage used to calculate payment in lieu must be equal to the average net floor area of the dwelling unit. Now, that doesn't mention garage or any of the other issues. But then, a couple lines down under exemptions, unit with a gross floor area of 1,000 square feet or more, including ADUs, those aren't the same thing. Now, I suggest, if it's going to be different approach in a different part of code, just have a clarification, not a justification, a clarification of why it's used in a different way in different parts of code. But my advice is, since we're in a housing community, is you either pick gross or net and make it uniform across the board, but of course, you don't have to do that. So I just wanted to share some input on gross and net and the real world out there and how it's used. So I hope that was a little helpful. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone online?
Yes, I have one hand raised online. Mary Wickler, you should be able to speak in a moment.
Hi, Mary Victor Samamish. I had emailed in and just written up my items for the public hearing. The one thing I wanted to know is where it says general development standards and it says landslide hazard development standards. It just seems peculiar to me that of all the critical areas, you would only call out landslide, maybe because you're not developing, and when you have to, the director has to make exceptions. Otherwise, I'm fine with that change. The other thing I ran into when I first started reading code and the comp plan from 2015 and stuff is there's special overlays, special district overlays, sensible area overlays, environment-sensitive areas, which are now called critical areas, and it gets really hard. And if you start reading the stormwater code, you'll also see that they have SOs and other things that they worry about. So I don't know if there's some clarification that can be made somewhere in the city's definitions that talk about what those things are, so when you encounter them in the code, you'll know. The other thing is SO-type things tend to be more restrictive or have more constraints in the regular code. And if you had like a middle housing SO, special overlay, that would be more uses that you would allow than prior uses. So I don't know if that thinking should be looked at as well. All the comments on what everybody said about useful space, I think, are very important. I would say that a garage is a livable space, but I think you should consider it. I think also if somebody has a really tall pitched roof, like you'll see on the lake or like houses in Sweden will use tile roofs and they're small houses, but they have a very pitched roof. If the roof is over such and such a pitch, maybe it should count. Otherwise, just the livable area sounds fine. And I think it is important that when you're doing the fee-in lieu to think about what the requirement is going to be and how that's going to change it for people who are trying to build ADUs and more affordable housing. And I don't really have a lot of other things to say. I wrote my notes, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else?
One more hands.
Okay, great. Would someone like to make a motion? Or would someone be willing to make a motion?
Okay, I'll take a crack at it. I move that we approve the staff recommendations and add the suggestion that staff further define gross square footage, so that's clear for everyone.
I'll second that.
I've been moving to second that we recommend these amendments to SMC Title 21 with the caveat that the staff clarify gross square footage. So any discussion? I would just say that I think that that topic of gross square footage is kind of interesting because as I sit here and think about it, I can come up with more and more, you know, three-season porch, screened-in porch, covered deck. When you build, I mean, back where I grew up, people are building, what do they call them? Barn dominiums for a while, now they're building garage, they're like a garage that has a living space built into it. So I would say, yes, we should decide what we want and then define that so that it's just consistent for everybody. But I'm not sure that I would be prepared at this moment to think of every possible permutation of that. We just have to decide how much we want to define it and then put it on a list and make sure it's consistent. So anyway, that was just a comment on that. Anything? Go ahead, David.
We can come back, so we can move this package forward if the commission sees fit, and we can add to the second package that's behind this, that definition, and we can take some time to do some research and talk to the rest of the current planning group and sort of understand where the pain points are and come back with a definition to present to you for your feedback.
Yeah, it kind of becomes an 80/20 situation where you want to capture the things that are most commonly contentious and then say that's good enough, I would think. Okay, anything else?
Do we need to amend the amendment to strike the gross definition?
I think it's fine as is.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to, you can, but I think it's fine. All right, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor of recommending these modifications to the city council and requesting a clarification of gross square footage, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? All right. That one passes, and we'll recommend that to the city council. Thanks, everyone. Okay, now let's move on to the more in-depth discussion of the modifications to SMC Title 21.
Look how fast we did that. That was quick.
And we even had a topic to actually talk about, too.
Yeah, yeah. So now on to the second group. So these vary in amount of deliberation and discussion. We're going to start off easy, some of the ones, again, that we feel are pretty minor, but we want to touch base with you all before we move them forward. And then as we get further down in the slide deck, there'll be ones to have more discussion over, but we'll start off nice and easy. And with one that probably should have been included in the first batch because it's very straightforward, but the code issue here is that hedge is not defined. This comes up for species of cypress and cedars that it can become pretty unclear if it's a hedge or if it's a tree. And different regulations obviously apply for both of those. So we are proposing adding a definition for hedge as a row of five or more trees of the same species densely planted to provide landscape barrier or screen maintained with ongoing pruning and shearing. And I think between each of these, we'll just stop and see if you all have any questions or comments. So any thoughts about the definition of hedge?
John looks like he's got a question.
I do. You say ongoing pruning and shearing, and, you know, we've got some laurel hedges out there that are touching the power lines, so would have height? No height. Let PSE worry about it if it gets in the lines. Okay.
Go ahead, Raji.
I have one question. So here you specifically said a row of five or more trees. And let's say we get one of these windstorms that takes down one of those five trees. Does the owner have the responsibility to bring up the same tree, I mean, the same species of the tree, to make it the five or more, to keep it as a hedge?
That's an interesting question. I'll look to our more planning-oriented counterparts to my right.
That's, we're hearing that a lot more with developments. So an interesting thing that's happening right now is we have several developments underway, and they're meeting their tree retention standards, but then the bomb cyclone came through and knocked down a bunch of their trees, like it did all over the city. It wasn't because of construction, it just was because the trees came down, and they're no longer in compliance with their tree retention requirements. So it's an interesting dilemma. We're trying to work through that right now on some projects. My answer is, is that so long as it has been maintained and you can see that there has been a pattern in how that's been trimmed and cut, and we have arborists that have verified this, we bump into this a lot. A neighbor thinks that the Leland cypress should be called trees, but then the neighbor that owns the Leland cypress is like, no, this is a hedge. And we issue a permit to remove the trees, and then we get it, sure enough, get a call that the trees were removed, you know, or removed the hedge. Well, those were trees, you're violating the tree code. So I think in response to your question is, is as long as you can show that the numbers were there, you know, people have, people have a lot of, you know, institutional history about their properties. They know what the history is and what's happened, and we usually are able to piece together photos or, you know, aerial photographs or things that can, or street view, you can go back and look at previous street view renderings from Google Street View, that kind of thing. So I think we have to, we have to, what's the, what's the right term? Grope our way through in the dark on that one.
Got it, got it. From the way you said that, it sounded as if the city or some part of the city, the city's contractors or somebody is going to be in the middle of figuring out what happens if another bomb cyclone comes. There are four of them or three of them, and now what happens? Is it a, is it a hedge or not, and all of those things. While we are working on that, should we also add the term to say it should be a Washington native tree? Or is this general term perfectly fine?
For a hedge?
For a hedge, yes.
I mean, the problem, I think, with this is that these trees that are being used, the Excelsa cedar and the Leland cypress are not native Washington natives. They're ornamental landscape varieties like Arbivites that are being used for screening, that people are planting them because they're fast-growing and because they block the visibility of someone's property. It's like a, you know, it's a hedge, basically. So I think for us, we're just trying to differentiate between the instance when it's a tree versus the instance when it's a hedge. And if it was planted as a hedge and it's been maintained as a hedge, then you can remove it and change your landscape as you see fit, just like you would taking down a fence and putting up a new fence. That's the general approach we've been trying to take, but we've been trapped by our code and by disagreement between neighbors on this topic. So we're trying to seek resolution on when is it a hedge and when is it a tree?
So to that point, the fact that you call a hedge is a row of five or more trees, do you want to take out the word tree? So you don't get trapped by?
I had the same question, but if the conflict is coming up about the tree versus the non-tree, then?
Or what about a hedge is a row of five or more trees of the same species, dense, da-da-da, or is there something else you'd want to add in there? Or other ornamental variety arranged in a way, in a manner of a hedge? Something like that.
Yeah, I guess I'd just ask, is that really ever an issue? Because if it's not a problem, then maybe we don't need to solve it.
Like a laurel, for example. Yeah, we don't, we don't have that issue with laurels. People generally want to see those things go away, but yeah.
Anything else on this one, or we're good to move on? Good to move on.
Looks like we're good.
So the next is the first time of two tonight that we'll talk about Chapter 2110, which is the mandatory affordable housing program chapter. This is about just cleaning up the code. It happened fast at the end of the year last year that we got this in. There ended up being some duplicative language. For example, the applicability statement is stated twice. The affordability requirements are stated up top, and then down at the bottom, the fee-in lieu requirements are listed in the wrong section. So we want to do some of this cleanup of just shuffling things around, getting rid of duplicative language. And then lastly, also clarifying how the square footage calculation method determine, to determine how much fee is owed, needs clarifying. And I'll switch to the next slide here and show an example of that. So currently, that reads as the square footage used to calculate the payment in lieu must be equal to the average net floor area of all dwelling units to be constructed on site of the subject property. And we, as staff, found that confusing because it is saying, so do you take the size of all of the units and then get one average, and then you just pay on that one average? And the intent is that if there are four units that are part of that fractional calculation, you'd be paying on the square footage for all four units, not the average of those units. So we're trying to clean, clean up the wording of that calculation to avoid any future confusion. So our proposed solutions are obviously remove the redundant language, shuffle things around so they're in the correct sections, and then I guess we're coming right back to that gross square foot footage discussion, but to change it to read total floor area of all dwelling units designated for in lieu fee payments.
Yeah, so this is kind of responding to the comment we heard from Mr. Stickney as well. We do agree with what he said, that there was some confusion there. The other thing I might note that we're doing here is, so I think there's a few examples, right? We currently require rounding from .5 and up. So if you have a one-unit development, a two-lot development, three- or four-lot development, you would be paying a fee in lieu on, under this, the total square footage of all of the units being built, the total floor area of the dwelling units being built. And if you then move into the .5, well, then you're rounding up to one whole, and you're having to build, one of the five has to be affordable. We're going to have a conversation about that in a little bit here. But then if you move beyond one, and now you're in 1.1 all the way up to 1.4, well, now you're at, you're at 11 units, 12 units, 13 units, 14 units, and you would be required, under, say, a 13-unit development, to build, you'd be required to build one affordable unit. You would get nine market units that are just built, and then you would get three additional market units that you'd be required to pay a fee in lieu on. And under this change here, it wasn't clear before how this worked, but we've added designated for fee-in lieu fee, or for in lieu fee. And why we did that was because we wanted the developer to be able to choose which of, in that scenario, those 13 units would be designated for the in lieu fee. It was not clear before, sometimes there's a range of units, and this gives the developer the option to choose the smaller units to pay the in lieu fee if they chose to. We're wanting to provide some additional flexibility to developers to figure out how to navigate between building actual units as the required inclusionary affordability requirement or paying the fee. So that language was added as well, designated for in lieu fee, because we wanted to clarify that.
Questions or comments?
Okay.
I have one question on this one. What is the motivation for me if I was a builder? Let's take that example of 13 units. Got nine market price units. One is the affordable unit, thank you. The remaining three are going to be for in lieu. Wouldn't I always go, for them being smaller, and increase my nine so that I can get more money out of it and not do this thing?
So, yeah, so I probably didn't explain that very well, so I apologize. So you'd be building under the scenario of, say, let's go back to 13 units. You'd be building 12 market rate units and one 80% AMI affordable unit, but of those, you would be only paying a fee in lieu on three of the market rate units.
And I, as the builder, get to decide which are the three?
You would get to choose which are the three.
Got it.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean you can't sell them for full market price, it's just that the, the in lieu fee is calculated off of the total square footage, the total floor area of those.
Three units.
Three units. And the total, maybe we could add in here, maybe there's a recommendation where you add in the total gross floor area in order to respond to the comment we heard earlier.
So if I just had 2,000 square feet units, ten of, nine of those, now I'm confused. Okay, nine of those units at 2,000 square feet. I have three of the units which are at like 1,400 square feet units, and one is an affordable unit, so we missed the four, affordable one. I can choose to say that these three are the ones for in lieu.
That's correct.
Doesn't that mean that now the system is going to be gamed? And that's a very bad word. Sorry, I didn't mean to say that. If the system is possible to be taken advantage of, to say, I'm going to always build these three small units because I don't want to pay for the whole of the thing. No?
I would only point out that you're thinking of this as the primary motivator. The primary motivator is to build the maximum square footage to sell for the maximum profit. So they're still going to build as big as they can, and then maybe they'll choose Unit 12, Unit 13, and Unit 5 that turn out to be 100 square feet less than the rest of them. But they're not going to build smaller ones to take advantage of this, because that's a, that's a counter incentive.
Got it. Thank you.
At least, that's what I would do.
Anything else here? Okay, we'll move on. Oh, these next couple are clarifying current development standards, and I'm actually going to pass the mic over to Sam to talk through these ones, because he will be able to do it much better than I.
Thank you, Evan. Yeah, so the first one is regarding fence location heights. The fence height limits are specified in our code, the Design Standards 2106020E2. And it's unclear as to when fence height is measured independently from the height of a close proximity retaining wall. So I guess the essential question here is, do you measure fence height from the toe of the wall or top of the wall? So I guess in context, the retaining wall limit would be a six-foot retaining wall limit within a setback. Similarly, the height limit for a fence is six feet, and there's certain allowances for it to go up to eight feet for a certain distance with your neighbor's approval. But it's not clear in the code as to when you put a fence approval. But it's not clear in the code as to when you put a fence on top of the retaining wall, if those are counted together or if they're separate. And I guess the proposed solution here is to define an area or amend the language to clarify when a fence is measured from the toe, top of a wall.
So I, now this question is then, I mean, that seems like you haven't figured it out yet. What's going to be the solution? Is like, when is it going to be measured from the bottom of the wall and when is it going to be measured from the bottom of the post?
Part of this also has to do with the, there's so many different combinations of these things that we see. And part of it is, is, so there's two different perspectives. The perspective from the person who lives down below the wall, who wants the fence to be tall enough so that when the person is up here on the neighbor's yard or the bedroom window or the kitchen, garden kitchen window that's looking down at them, they want to be able to block that. But you don't want it to be too tall so that you have a, you know, massive facade right in your backyard that you're staring out at all the time. So we're trying to find some balance here. And I guess the feedback that we're seeking is, is it okay for us to find a formula that requires that you strike a balance between the two properties? We commonly see disagreements between neighbors over walls and fences and those kinds of things. And we're wanting some clarity around, you know, who gets preference? Like who wins? And I, you know, it may not be, I think we're definitely going to want to come back with, on this one, with some more, with a proposed formula. But for now, what we're looking for is, you know, for example, if you had a four-foot wall that just is just under height to require a permit, and you had on top of that a six-foot fence, that's a 10-foot tall fence. But what if you required that when done in combination, there was an offset so that you had, you know, two feet of setback or one foot of step back from the top of the wall, which would also allow then the person on the downhill side to plant some form of meaningful vegetation to help hide the fence? And, you know, it's a bit abstract, and I hope you understand where I'm going with this, but the challenge is, is that not all neighbors agree on how this should be done. And we're trying to establish some code to help guide us through those scenarios.
Well, I have a question. So is there a standard height for the fence or the top? Six feet?
Yeah. Yeah, within the side setback, it'd be limited to six feet maximum height.
Thank you.
My button's missing. I can see the complexities. And to make it worse is where the retaining wall is in relation to the property line. Oh, I'm going to get, I'm going to get a mic with a button.
Austerity measures. That's right, budget cuts.
Yeah, budget cuts. Yeah, so I can see great deal of difficulty in trying to even craft some compromise language because if the retaining wall is right on the property line to do the setback and some plantings, you'd be into your neighbor's yard. So, yeah, for new development, probably not an issue that you could require that kind of setback. Conversely, I'm wondering, so the downhill neighbor's got a pretty tall retaining wall, the uphill neighbor wants to build a fence but can't do it on top of the retaining wall, can they just set it back and have a six-foot fence, you know, and lose a foot of their property? You know, so there's all those complications. Good luck, I guess.
So I have this exact situation on one side of my house. So I have some firsthand experience with this, and I've lived there, well, more than 20 years. I would suggest a couple of things to think about. Whoever's there first should get priority because they were there first, and that is a fair way. That someone comes along and wants to make a change, then they have to fit into the situation that's already there. The idea of having a setback and putting some plantings, you have to be a little careful about that because the likely scenario is, you know, so now you're putting plantings on somebody else's property who maintains that. What if nobody maintains it? What if nobody, what if it's a yard? Nobody takes care of the yard, pretty soon you got weeds, and there's just a lot of, I don't know about that. What I would say is, find a combination where after some height of wall, retaining wall, then the fence starts to get a bit shorter. So what I have is the neighbor put a, it's a fairly tall, it's probably six feet tall retaining wall, it varies, and they put a five-foot fence. And that's, that scales about right because it still blocks more than I would like of the sun coming on that side of my house, although that side's the, doesn't matter as much. But it's not so tall that it seems overwhelming. So if you can just scale down and say, okay, but you don't want it to be three feet, right? Because then there's no point in the fence. Is four feet okay? But there could be some variability there that I think makes sense if it's starting to get up in the air quite a ways, to try to balance between the two. And like I say, that five foot, yeah, it's five foot. So, you know, if I'm standing right next to their fence, I can actually look over it, but nobody usually does that. And the fences, and the other thing I'd just point out is, when you're in that situation, one of the things you actually want a fence there, because when they have kids that are kicking balls and doing baseball and running around, that fence is a good thing to have. So, you know, there's pluses and minuses, but I do think providing a little bit of variability can be a good thing. And I do think that whoever's there first, you know, that's a reasonable way to find some balance between them.
Thank you for that, those comments. That's, you know, this is going to be helpful in trying to find a solution here. One of the things the code does currently say is that a combined wall and fence cannot exceed 10 feet. But what it doesn't do is, it doesn't say, when are they considered combined? So we've had scenarios where someone had a, you know, a six-foot wall that was done with a permit, right, and done properly. And then they, they wanted to build a six-foot fence a foot back from the wall. And they're saying, well, it's not at the top of the wall. So wanting to clarify that as well, that, that what is a reasonable proximity to the top of the wall where the wall and the fence should be measured together? That's another part of this equation. So you can see there's a lot of dynamics to the, a lot of components to this and things that we see that we're trying to address. And we wouldn't bring this forward if it wasn't something that we were repeatedly seeing and hearing about in the community.
And also, if you're going to set the fence back from the wall to allow planting strip, make sure it's adequate to support a hedge.
Five trees.
Five or more trees. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on this one? Okay, moving on.
All righty, I'll take this next one as well. So the issue with the code that we've identified here is that the maximum sidewall height in our height measurement section of our code, 2104030J, needs a bit of clarification. So it's unclear when exactly the maximum sidewall height measurement is required. And do you want to note, this was temporarily resolved by a code interpretation. And the code interpretation language essentially established if the structure of the home is setback four feet greater than the minimum side setback, then the sidewall requirement or sidewall maximum requirement wouldn't apply.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, certainly. So the code interpretation aspect of it, yeah. So the current code interpretation states that when a structure or a home is setback four feet more than the minimum side setback, then the maximum sidewall height measurement wouldn't apply.
Well, I have one thing to that. So what the code is trying to achieve currently, and it's falling short of that a little bit, is that when you're building a building and you're maximizing the side setback or, you know, building it right up to the side setback line, that you can't build a, you know, 35-foot tall wall right there, that there's a limit on how tall the wall can be at the side setback line. But how far back do you have to go in order for that to not apply? We landed on four feet after a debate that almost ended up in a legal confrontation with a, with a, with someone building a home down on Lake Simamish Parkway in this. So we landed on four feet initially, but should it be more? Is the question, you know, should it require that that wall, that higher wall be more than, so that'd be, in a five-foot setback scenario, that'd be nine feet from the property line. In a 10-foot setback scenario, that would be 14 feet from the property line. And how this was originally modeled, the commission asked years ago, and we did Phase One Development regs, about creating a daylight plane. I don't remember that conversation. And the idea there is that on a daylight plane, what happens is you have, at the setback lines, you have the first floor plate that goes up, and I can't remember, what is it, 10 feet or something that it goes up to in height? And then from there, you would measure back with a certain pitch, right, to get to the peak. So you could build basically anything in there. Well, we, we found that a daylight plane, we concluded that a daylight plane standard is really hard to administer because of the measurements and the graphics, and then you have to actually inspect it and make sure that you're getting surveys on the, on the floor plate heights and all those things that go along with it. So we simply said that you, your wall height at the setback needs to be this, and that then we included a requirement that your wall height can be taller when it's not at the setback. Well, that got us into trouble because now we have people that are wanting to build at, you know, five feet, six inches back, a wall that goes to 35 feet. So we're trying to add some clarity here so that we can get the right outcome, protect neighbors, have clarity for builders and applicants and property owners, and not end up in these protracted debates.
Any comments, John?
So I see the dilemma in what you're saying. I see the dilemma in my neighborhood with what I'd describe as big box homes, straight sides, flat roofs, that are creating this sort of problem. I don't have a solution, but I'm thinking towards sort of the wedding cake, you know, at the, at the minimum setback, one story, some feedback, two stories, quite a bit more for three to get something. I don't know, I don't have the formula, but some way to do that so you don't have a 35-foot wall right on your, because I see that happening in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I actually agree that that was what I was trying to think of. How do you do that simply without, you know, creating more problems? I'm not sure. But yeah, if you just want to go a little bit over the limit when you're at four feet, what is a little bit? I don't know. But, you know, not 30, not 70 feet, right? But, you know, if you want to go a little bit over the limit and you're at four feet extra, fine. But if you really want to build something that's a big box like you're describing, then it should be definitely some kind of restriction. I also, you guys will completely shake your head, but I'm not sure. Four feet sounds too, too little to me. For some reason, it feels like it should be five feet. I have no, I have absolutely no basis for that, but it just feels like four feet is small. But of course, you got to combine that with a setback, so it's not four feet, it's four feet plus the setback. So maybe that is okay. And of course, then you also get into issues of like, okay, now you're doing this, but it's on the uphill side. So then that makes that whole issue much worse than if you're on the downhill side and you have some slope coming down for the setback and the four feet, probably much less of an issue. So it's kind of complicated.
When you were saying, Chair, when you were saying the four feet, I was just thinking of the same thing. I was looking at this table and I was thinking, is this four feet? And if this is four feet, this is too short a distance. And if I can, if I can build a 35-foot wall over here on the other end of it, that practically defeats the purpose of the, of trying to have a good regulation that's going to make it easier. And I thought, first I thought, who wants to have a 35-foot regulation, a 35-foot wall? But there are not so many home improvement fans these days who can go across to the neighbor and talk across the fence, right? So it isn't, isn't our core, isn't our, this one to encourage that behavior. And so that way, we should discourage the height construction for this, and we can make it harder. If it is one foot higher, one foot more, people don't like to lose that one foot to build another 35-foot one. So maybe they will not do that. So maybe five foot versus four foot makes a, makes a difference.
How many floors is this at 25 foot?
Three floors.
Generally, three floors, correct.
So if, if we want to consider the wedding cake, you're going to go one floor, you're going to go flat, then another floor, then you're going to go flat. It's just going to enclose, increase the cost of the house. So it's defining again the purpose of what we're trying to do to make the cost of the housing come down.
So the code, I want to also clarify, just I have the code open here. I'm just wanting to make sure I got all the details, that it does state that the maximum sidewall height of any building must not exceed 24 feet. So what that's saying is that we already allow a wall on the setback line up to 24 feet. I think the, the debate here is about how do you get the additional 11 feet and how far back do you have to be? So we had a lot of debate about whether we should require that at the property line, it's only one story, and that then you have the wedding cake. And we had the similar conversation to what, then conclusion to what, what you just stated was what the commission and council concluded, was that it would cause, you know, additional costs. It would result in awkward architecture. There would be some benefits to it, sure, but the negatives outweighed the benefit of it. And they landed at allowing 24 feet at the setback line, but that, that was the maximum height you could get on your side yards. And I think that what we've been seeing is some, a push on some sites where people want to build really big homes to, and they want to push the home over to the side so they've got a big yard over here or something. They want to build a 35-foot wall right on the property, right on the setback line. And we're saying, well, no, you got to at least be four feet off of the setback line to get up. So it causes some articulation in the, in the building design.
Now that you said the 24, I think you can go 24 and then go flat and then go the remaining whatever, 11 or on the third floor.
How far back would you want to see them go? That's where we landed at four feet internally. So that, with our code interpret, so that's the question, is if you went up...
Four or five, it's, it's not a big difference. So if five makes more sense, I don't see a big difference between four or five.
Yeah, okay. I would suggest when we review this for making it final, do a couple sketches. We can, because like, want to look at these tables and think, well, you know, if the setback is 10 feet, that's two tables, and now another, you know, it just helps to visualize it a little bit.
I was thinking the same, that with these kinds of modifications, just two-line diagrams, it makes it more easier for us to see it.
Absolutely. We'll come back with that. One, it's helpful for us because then we can use those for tip sheets if that's what gets approved. So there's kind of a dual purpose. We could recycle that and use that again. One of the other ways this could be applied, so you could go up and then over and then up, right? Up, across and up. It could also be applied, if you look at it from a, from an aerial photograph, in aerial perspective, is it could go like this on the footprint line. And that allows for things like AC compressors, you know, like HVAC equipment to go in those, whatever you want to knock out slots. Yeah, so that, there's one benefit to that as well.
Emergency generators.
But who came up with the four-foot, though? How did that happen? It's just curious.
It was our trying to understand what a reasonable distance was, and also looking at the prescribed setbacks for a bigger building, and how much bigger those were. So if you recall, we have dynamic setbacks that apply to different-sized structures. So what we did was we looked at, what would the next setback be for a larger structure, and then use the number, and the jump there on that. So, yeah.
Did you have something hanging?
Yeah, just a quick thing. So in these distances, four feet, five feet, I just want to bring up something that Chair said before, is slope and elevation of the terrain considered? Because, for example, if I'm on, like, Chair said, if I'm on the downslope, four feet away, like, 35-foot-tall, I can't see anything. But if it's flat terrain, it might be a little easier, and like, better for me if, like, say, a 20-foot wall was in place.
Great that you asked that. We're going to get into that as one of the next ones. And the answer is yes, topography does matter. And the way we do, and we want to talk about approving this, but the way we do building height measurements is from existing grade. We had a problem back in 20, you know, for a long time as a community, where builders were building up the grade and then building on top of it to make the house pop and dominate the community. So we changed the regulations to require that the building height be measured from existing grade, and it's also average grade. So the wall heights and things are measured from an average floor plate across the site. So topography definitely is accounted for, that's a good question.
Okay, next one.
All right. This next one is in regards to the way we measure building height. So there's essentially two formulas for calculating building height. And the one that we consistently have issues with is the first one, so J1 under 2104030. This one is, essentially, the regulation states that the measurement is to be taken from the crown of the street to the highest point in the middle of the front facade of the building. So I guess it's based on perception, taking, you know, standing in the middle of the street, how large does the structure appear when you're staring straight through to the front. So our recommendation is, well, I guess, once we've adopted this, I believe it was in 2022, January 1st is when this one came into effect, you know, we've had a number of architects, developers not necessarily be able to wrap their heads around how to measure their buildings. And then this, I guess the second way that we measure building height is if your structure is 20 feet or greater behind, or 20 feet or greater setback from the front property line, is to take the average existing grade of each facade, and then you would just measure straight up from there. So that's more of a mathematical approach to the height measurement. We find that that one is a lot easier to administer, it's a lot easier to explain to developers, to architects, and that one's a little bit more straightforward.
Questions, Ajay?
Is that average, how is that average calculated? Is it for the entire neighborhood, or is it for the four or five neighboring homes that calculates that average?
So you would take, you would draw a, essentially a square around that encloses your building footprint, and then from each side of that square, you would take, at each corner, I believe, yeah, A, B, and then you would take the average of those two measurements, and then find your average existing grade from, I guess, each corner of those, of that square.
It's done on a, in building-by-building basis, right? So each individual building has its height measured, and it's based on the, so the general process is, when an applicant is looking to build a new home, subdivide, whatever it is they might be doing, they're required to generate a topo survey of the property prior to starting to design it. And they're required to use that topo survey of existing grade to generate an average elevation. And then, across the whole site, then they basically drop the building in there, and then that narrows it down to that average elevation of that building square that Sam described. Then you measure up to 35 feet from there. We commonly require, the challenge is, is that when you're inspecting these, under this methodology that we're proposing, we're just sticking with the simplified methodology, a surveyor can go out and pick up that, the building height, based on their original survey that they did. It's pretty easy, you can get an elevation certificate. We do require elevation certificates when builders are pushing within a couple of feet of the building height. We want to make sure that, you know, buildings aren't over height. But it's really hard to do a height measurement when you're trying to measure using the first methodology for inspection, because you have to go out to, it's all based on the perspective of the viewpoint of the observer, right, out in the street. And it's just virtually impossible to get an elevation certificate to verify how tall the building is with that methodology. So that's one side of it is, first is, you know, trying to get the right outcome, but how do you then inspect it for the right outcome? That's another side to it, we're trying to simplify that.
So I can tell you, right off the bat, from experience in our older neighborhoods, you can't even see the street from my house. My front door doesn't face the street. So, you know, you've got all these variables. And then, as we look at the middle housing overlay, you're going to have units that are behind other units. Again, you can't see the street. So it seems more logical, almost nicks the first one entirely, there's just too many variables.
Plus, what if you have a, and we have lots of these, streets here, slope down, house down here.
Yeah, yeah.
You can't really build.
Yeah, my house is about 12 feet below the street and 300 feet back. You'd be hidden just close to the peak.
Okay, any other questions on this one?
Moving on. So the next one is a process change around final subdivision approvals. So currently, the city code gives final approval authority to the city council. The issue here is, though, there's really no discretion at this point in the process for the city council. It's ministerial act. For them to choose to not approve it risks the city facing delay damages. So staff are proposing to work, to find a solution to this, is remove it from the city council process and have the hearing examiner approve final subdivisions. The legislature gave cities authorities to delegate to the hearing examiners or other bodies in 2017. So this is something that I think makes a lot of sense from staff's perspective. It feels a little disingenuous to give the council, you know, a final approval that really they just have to rubber stamp and move on. There's no decision for them to make. And removing it from them and putting in the hearing examiner, I think, streamlines that process. David, do you have anything else you want to speak to on that?
Sure. There's a lot of work that goes into a subdivision, and the hearing examiner is the one that really is pivotal and the most involved as an authority in it all, aside from staff making recommendations on it. And we, you know, we feel that the hearing examiner is the best-suited individual or authority to review and approve a final subdivision, because the hearing examiner has a file on it, the hearing examiner has done site visits, the hearing examiner held a hearing on it, the hearing examiner was the one that wrote the approval with the conditions and understands what they are. The hearing examiner understands the context of subdivision law. The hearing examiner is trained and understands the ins and outs of the legal process that goes along with subdivisions. So our finding is that it's, it's, part of the process, you know, it just naturally lends itself to the hearing examiner finalizing the approval of it and verifying that all of the conditions had been met, based on staff recommendation. Many cities have moved this way, you know, Redmond, or, excuse me, Bellevue, Kirkland, Shoreline, Auburn, I think, since 2017. So it is something that we're starting to see most cities moving towards, because it does lend itself to just naturally wrapping up the subdivision process.
Any questions about that one?
So it's going to go from a group of people to one individual?
It would go from the city's legislative body, a group of city council members, who generally review it on consent, and it is seen as ministerial or ceremonial, if you will, because I think the thing to highlight with a subdivision is that, under state law, under RCW 5817, the, I want to say, the protections that subdivisions are granted are significant. So when you come in with a complete application for a subdivision, you are then protected under those rules that are in place when you make complete application until, and it goes through the whole cycle. So there's a review cycle, which could take, you know, anywhere from a year up to five to six years for you to get through preliminary subdivision. Then, once the hearing examiner holds a hearing, and in theory approves the subdivision, then you're granted a five-year protection from that point, where you have the opportunity to build the required infrastructure improvements, the water, sewer, sidewalks, roads, all the things that serve a subdivision. And so long as you complete it within that five-year timeframe, you can then apply for your final subdivision. And the city then is required to approve a final subdivision within 30 days, the state law says, when applications made and conditions are met, that a city shall approve a final subdivision within 30 days. It's not a lot of discretion there. The interesting thing, then, is that a subdivision, once a final subdivision or final plot is approved and recorded, that the developer is offered another five years of protection. So you can start to see how subdivisions can go 10, 12, 14 years from the date of application, and they are vested or grandfathered back to that point of application. And even if the city wanted to change its rules or do something in the meantime, that project is protected, given very heavy protection under state law, and is only subject to the rules that were in place when it came in for complete application. So the point here, I think, is that when a city council receives a final subdivision, there is often the impression that a city council could choose to say, no, we don't like that. We want this subdivision to look differently. And that is just not the case at all, because that subdivision is protected all the way back to the rules that were in place, in theory, five or six years prior, and nothing can be done to change those rules. Really, at that point, the council is serving in the capacity of an auditor of the file, if you will. And we feel that a hearing examiner, their sole purpose in their contract with the city is to really serve as an auditor, and they're trained in that capacity.
It's just my concern, I want to protect the community as well as the developer, that I don't want to put the decision in the hands of one person in lieu of a city council. If this examiner likes or dislikes the developer, or has an opinion about the development, he can make a decision based on that. But when it goes to a council, that's a group of people, that, right or wrong, their decision, it's a decision of a group of people instead of one person.
Absolutely, that's a great point. I would say that the hearing examiner is hired and fired by the council directly. They are, they are under contract with the council. So there's that side to it, too. But, you know, ultimately, we're presenting this as an option, an alternative path, that we feel would result in more efficient process and would not change the outcomes, because by the time the project has been built and the staff have inspected it and signed off on it, and it makes its way to the city council, it is, for all purposes, done at that point.
So is this at the very end of the project, or is that the initial phase of the project?
This was at the very, very end of the project, where the real property tax lots are being created. So I would say, to clarify, it's at the end of the cycle of the project before building permits are applied for. So they've built all the roads, the sidewalks, they've done the rough grading, the stormwater system is in place and inspected to be functional, sewer's in, power comms are in, everything's in, and you basically are ready to start going in and going vertical with structures.
So if I take town center as an example, infrastructure is already in now, roads are in, what will this individual be deciding on versus what will the city council be deciding on?
The same thing. It would be...
No, no, I meant what will this individual be making the decision on? How many number of units can be built in those?
No, that's already been sorted. So the general life cycle of a subdivision project is, that's, a developer will find a piece of property, and will then identify what the capacity of that property is when following city codes. And they'll go through a pre-application conference with the city, they'll go through a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors, then they'll have met the, they'll pull together all the background information, technical information reports, engineering, site plans, surveys, all the stuff that goes along with it, showing how they meet city codes. Then they will submit the application to the city, and the city will screen it for completeness. If it's complete, then a notice of application is issued, or, excuse me, a letter of completeness is granted to the applicant, and that really is the point where they vest, right? That's a really important benchmark. Then, from there, the city is required to issue a notice of application to all the neighbors, a mailing goes out, a sign goes up. We usually go through, you know, a few rounds of corrections with an applicant, they don't always get it right first. We see, you know, refinements to stormwater plans, tree retention plans, critical areas, protections, street designs, all those things, right? Those all are refined to the point where they meet city codes. And then what happens is the staff collectively, between the different discipline groups, whether it's public works, planning, parks, transportation, writes up a staff report documenting how the project complies with city regulations. At that point, the project is noticed for a public hearing. And a notice goes out to all the neighbors again, the sign gets updated, and it notices that there's going to be a public hearing, and it notices that there is a staff recommendation and a staff report available for review. Usually, that's 72 days before the hearing, so there's quite a run-up to the hearing. Then what happens is, the hearing examiner will hold a public hearing, and, you know, through the process, staff also consider public comment and provide response to public comment from neighbors or concerned parties, even agencies. And that all gets rolled up in the staff report as part of the staff recommendation. And when that gets issued, then there's a notice that goes out on a public hearing, hey, there's going to be a public hearing on this proposed subdivision at this date, at this time, at this location. Then the hearing examiner is given the files and given the recommendation with all of the exhibits, all the background information. The hearing examiner begins their review of that, where they systematically go through the staff recommendation, all of the exhibits, they go through the city's codes, and they basically audit or validate that what the staff is saying is accurate. They do a site visit, they then open the hearing, collect additional public comment from any commenters who might want to talk about the project. They then consider the public comment, they consider the city staff's recommendation and the staff report, they consider the city's codes, they consider the site visit, they then make their decision about whether the project should be allowed to proceed, based on the design. And they would issue a, hearing examiner's conclusion, findings, and decision, right? And the conclusion, findings, and decision will go through the whole documents, the whole process, what the staff did, what the hearing examiner did, what everybody said during the hearing, and identi- during the hearing, and identify any areas where there might be gaps in the information, and will assign conditions. So usually the hearing examiner will either remand back to staff if they find that the staff work was inadequate, or the hearing examiner could, if the staff are recommending and they agree, deny the project, which we have done before, or the hearing examiner will approve the project generally with conditions, and sometimes the conditions range from three conditions to like 300 conditions. It just depends on the scope and scale of the project. Then what happens is, once that decision is issued, that enables the developer to apply for what we call a site development construction permit. It's a clear and grade permit with infrastructure, it allows them to grade out the property, start to put in all the, the roads and things, and tree protection goes in, all the, you know, stuff goes in, and they, they then invest millions of dollars in the ground building infrastructure. Developers get a little squirrely about that, because at that point, they don't have the tax lots yet, there is no collateral created, because they're building on faith that the city will approve the final subdivision and allow the tax lots to be created. So a, a big investment is made in the property, there's gold put in the ground, basically, and a developer then proceeds as quickly as they can to build out the infrastructure. Not all developers are created equal, some are faster, some are slower. And generally speaking, when they get to the point of the infrastructure being substantially complete, we have our public works staff go out and do an inspection, where they complete a public works inspection certificate validating that all the things are done, the stormwater system's functional, the rough grade, the roads are at ATB, just awaiting the final lift, sidewalks are in, signs are in, no parking, safety stuff's in, fire hydrants, water, sewer, all the stuff is in. And then they also verify that all the conditions of the approval have been met. Maybe there was a wetland mitigation requirement that had to be done, maybe there was some additional trees that needed to be protected, maybe there was, I'm trying to think of, you know, an additional storm, additional stormwater vault needed to be added. Those are all listed in the conditions of approval, so we have a giant matrix that tracks compliance with those conditions. So ultimately, when that's all done, then, then the, the applicant applies, or submits final subdivision application to the city. At that point, project is mostly done, and the, the developer then is seeking final subdivision for final plat. The plat is a paper document that gets recorded with the county that shows the break, breakup of all the lots. And that is the point where they can then record it upon final city approval and create the real tax lots, which now is their product, and start to build homes on them.
Is that the step that we're saying the examiner does instead of the city council?
That is the step that we're saying currently goes to the city council, and the city council then reviews compliance with all of these conditions that the hearing examiner set, reviews compliance with the general approval design, all the stuff, right? And they've never seen the project. So what we're saying is that the hearing examiner has been intimately involved all along, is the one that set the conditions, and is the one that is generally best suited to review compliance with those conditions in an expeditious manner, because they're already familiar with them.
So instead of the reviewer presenting to the council saying, this is everything I have done, and this is my recommendation, we're saying exclude that final step.
We would be doing that to the hearing examiner, instead of the council. It just would be the hearing examiner that would receive that presentation, and then the hearing examiner would decide, yeah, no, all these things have been addressed, versus the council deciding that. And the council are, I completely understand your, your comment earlier. The council is not trained in this, this manner. This is something that a hearing examiner is specially trained for and selected by the council, really, to do, and that's why we feel they're best suited to continue with this. And that's why the legislature decided to make that change, to allow this to happen.
Okay, thank you. Somebody write all that down.
Yeah. We have a video. Any other comments, questions? We will go-
Yeah, so I would support going to the hearing examiner for this final step. The council can always can the hearing examiner, even halfway through a project, it's happened before, where things go sideways with a hearing examiner and they get replaced, but you got a pro at the table.
Is that the deterrent for the hearing examiner? Because the hearing examiner, there are two ways to it, right? The hearing examiner is close to the project, he has a good idea about it, he's the best judge of it. But the hearing examiner is a human being, too. He could get associated to, to one particular viewpoint about that area or that project and harp on that point or that, this one. Is, is the fact that the city council has the final, final say about the hearing examiner the deterrent in this whole process?
I would say that it's more the qualifications of a hearing examiner. Hearing examiners are a special breed, they're, they're few and far between, and, you know, I, I've been, in the years I've done this, I've probably worked with about eight different hearing examiners, and I've never seen a hearing examiner that will take a side. I, I don't know how they do it, but they are, are very, you know, focused on the information in front of them, the criteria, and really thorough. It's kind of a phenomenon, but, you know, and they're, they're harder to find, to be honest. So I don't want to discourage you from this, but we have a really good hearing examiner now that I think the, the developer and the staff both have a hard time with, so, yeah.
When, so, one thing maybe for future discussion, or maybe you can just answer this now, has, in your time here, has the city council ever been able to do anything other than delay approval of a subdivision?
And the challenge there is, is if, if a subdivision was delayed, we are obligated under state law, under RCW 5817, to review and grant final approval. And I think the code, the state law has some really old language, inscribe your signature of approval on the final subdivision within no more than 30 days following application. So the challenge there is that if a council chose to hold it, that we are then in violation of RCW 5817. Now, obviously, someone has to challenge us on that, that's the other side to it, but I'm just pointing out what state law does say.
Next. Next is, so now we're getting into the conversation we've teased earlier around the mandatory affordable housing chapter. We met with the council about setting the fee and lieu policies, and during that discussion, they asked us to come back to the planning commission and have a conversation with you to reassess if, first, the 1,000-square-foot exemption from paying, paying the fee is appropriate, or if that should potentially be scaled up a little bit. This does, we did hear, we've received feedback from the building community that 1,000-square-foot really kind of limits the possibilities of, of marketable, feasible products, and they've, they've recommended looking at 1,500 square feet, because you could feasibly do a three, you know, a small three-bedroom home. So the council asked for your input on that. Also, instances of homes being rebuilt, should those be exempt? So both in the case of, you know, a fire tragedy, loss of a home, or in the case of demolishing a home and rebuilding, should those instances be exempt? We also want to get your input on if rounding up from .5 units and above is appropriate to require building a full unit, or if we should reconsider that rounding threshold. I think, and I'll, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but we, staff do recommend upping that rounding threshold, so basically until, up to .9, I guess. Anytime you hit 10, you would build a full unit, otherwise, you're eligible to pay a fee and lieu on those nine preceding units. Oh, and lastly, how should we consider additions to homes? Should there be consideration, let's say you have a 1,000-square-foot cottage home, and you decide to add 2,000 square feet to it, should you be paying a fee and lieu on that in the affordability program or not? So I will turn it over to you to hear your thoughts.
No, go, go ahead, Asham.
If I start, this is gonna take a while.
Okay, I'll go first, then.
Go, John.
Let Asham off the hook for a little bit. After watching the council discussion on this and reading the master builder's communication and other input, I think the 1,500 square foot, and I think back to my wife's first house was like just shy of 900 square feet, one bedroom, you know, it's just, it wasn't big enough for kids at all. So that seemed to make sense to me. Rebuilt is a tricky one. If it's, going back to the definitions earlier on demolition, 50%, so if it's an existing house and they're doing a demo to rebuild it, one thing. Rebuilding after a major earthquake that totally leveled the house is a different issue in my, in my mind. So I, I think in the first instance, the definition you have for demolition could be applied here to define whether it's being rebuilt or demoed. And then, square footage, I don't, you know, because you rebuild it, you're gonna probably make it bigger, so the addition question comes in. And I'll come back to that. But for the, for a house that's burned down or severely damaged, rebuilding it to its existing size, gross square footage, now that we've got that defined, I wouldn't see that as needing to pay the in-lie fee. But if it's a demo, and you're doing something else, that's different to me. Additions, boy, that's a really tough one. I don't have any, any thoughts right now. If you've got a small house and you're gonna make it bigger because you got extra kids or a cat, two cats, where, where that line is, I, I don't have a good, good sense.
Well, I'm gonna start from the top and then drill. I'm, I'm completely opposed to, to any penalty or tax on someone building a house for their family. And I know this is gonna open the door to, how do we know he's building or she's building it for their family? I'm, I'm gonna say I'm dealing with honest people. And if a developer is building a development of more than a certain number of homes, maybe the, the tax, it applies to it. I still disagree, but maybe it applies to that. But I'm tearing down my house, rebuilding it, I don't pay a tax. Adding an addition, I don't pay a tax. I'm building a new house for my family, I just bought a piece of land, and I'm building a house for my family, I don't pay a tax. And, I mean, we are, we are trying to provide affordable housing for a sector in the community. We cannot penalize another sector of the community. And 1,500 or 1,000 square feet, that, that, that's not enough. Let's be reasonable. I mean, back after World War, yeah, houses were 1,000 square feet, but the needs have changed. And people nowadays, they work from home, and needs change. The society started needing more spaces. So we, we need to give people more spaces so they can, can live in a good way, and we can encourage them to be part of the community for a longer time. Because if I say only 1,500, what's the likelihood in five years you will need to move? High. We, we all started in starter homes, and they were small, but once you have kids and the kids, they grow up, you need a larger house. And you want to encourage people to be part of the community for the next 20 or 30 years. Mark told you, he has been in his house for 20 years. So why do we say to Mark, you can only build 15, when you know he can only live there for a very short period of time? Back to Mark.
I would say I just generally agree with Asham. I, I would, I would, if it was, I mean, what you're asking, what you're proposing here, I think is fine. My personal opinion is I would raise 1,500 to 3,000, I would exempt all that stuff. I, I generally agree. I, I don't think we should penalize people who are building a house for themselves. Now, maybe if they're building a McMansion with two master suites and, you know, 6,000 square feet, hmm, maybe I could be talked into that. But, you know, I mean, a, a house that's in the 2,500 or 3,000 square feet is a common family home, and do we really need to have those people contributing if they're building a house for themselves? If a developer's building 10 houses? Yeah. That's the hard part here, is, you know, how does this get applied? But generally, I agree. For individuals, I, I just don't think this stuff should really apply. It should apply to more broad scale. Ajay, it looked like you had a comment.
Yeah, the question that I had is on point number two. I, I agree with that point, but I have, I, I didn't come easily to that agreement point. I was thinking that, wouldn't, wouldn't our regulations right now apply to a number of other factors, and why shouldn't it apply to this one, too? If I was, if I had a home, if I had a 1920 home, which is off of city code for a number of things right now, and suddenly that 1920 home went down in some calamity or something like that, and I'm going to rebuild from the ground up, I'm not building it to the 1920 structure, right? I'm building it to 2020, 2025 structure. So, and when I'm, and I have to follow the rules of the current expectation, not to how it was built at that point in time. So I, so that's the only thing that I'm thinking on for the exemption, but otherwise, I agree. 1,500 seems like a fair thing. I know there are mansions that can be built, but other than that, and also the fractional units be eligible for it, and we are, we talk of additions in the terms of ADUs and other things, so, you know, we cannot encourage on one side and discourage on another side. So I understand the exemption, too. It's my only, my only concern is on point two, and I don't have a good answer for that. I'm still tossing with the two options in there.
I also would just say that I think, for me, it's valuable to put a real, real-world, real-people situation to these kind of things. We have friends who, a tree fell on their house during the bomb cyclone and caused extensive damage, the, the wife barely escaped, had to go to the emergency department. So, I mean, tragic thing. So they're gonna have to rebuild a big chunk of their house. They have a small house, it's probably, I'm gonna guess, 1,200 square feet. Now, what if, they don't want to, but what if they said, huh, you know, this is, we gotta replace the whole roof framing system anyway, let's put another floor on top of the first floor we have, and all of a sudden now, guess what? You got a 2,400-square-foot house, which would be great for them and their family, it's a, it's kind of, you know, an opportunity if they've got the money to do it. Now we're saying we're gonna penalize them because they took, you know, a bad situation and turned it into something good? I just, I don't see that we're really accomplishing what our goal is in those situations.
Yeah. And it, that aligns with the staff recommendation, at least what we have it now, so.
Right, we, what we're saying here, I think, is that we would exempt them in that situation.
Yeah.
I-
So you, you would exempt them from the situation, even if it's 2,400?
Yeah, it's additions. Addition should be exempt, and I think also we would clearly write into the rules that emergency situations like a, you know, rebuild and, yeah, act of nature might, you know.
One second. We were talking of rebuild, and that's an addition, right? So I don't know the line, I don't know where that line falls.
So the 1,500 square feet would be an exemption for a new construction?
No, no, I mean, point two, they exempt the homes from being rebuilt.
Exempt, exempts homes that are being rebuilt from paying this. So if you were to demolish, under the definition of demolition, the definition of demolition, if you were to demolish your home and rebuild it and make it bigger, make it the same size, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, under that proposal, you would not be required to pay the in-lie fractional fee for the square footage of the home.
And, and that lines up- And, and that lines up with the additions being exempt here.
It does also line up with the additions being exempt.
Well, there you go. There you solve my problem.
Okay. So, for example, if you have a 1,500 square foot existing house and I just wanna change it to 9,000 square feet, I'm still exempt. No, just, just example, right?
We have seen similar situations, yeah. Not, not that unrealistic.
Some judges.
They go and buy the old ones.
Yeah, yeah, which have more lots.
It's usually on the shoreline.
Any other thoughts? Can move on, we've just got a couple left. The next issue is updating some of our newly adopted language to make sure we're in alignment with state law. So what happened here was the Department of Commerce provided us comments after we adopted our implementing development regulations for the comprehensive plan. And they stated that, they point out that our spacing and occupancy requirements that we put on emergency housing, emergency shelters and emergency housing and permanent supportive housing would effectively limit the capacity that we're required to demonstrate we have for those types of units. So our proposed language is just removing those problematic spacing and occupancy requirements for both of those housing types. And in the table here, I've listed what currently exists. So for permanent supportive housing, we currently have in there that no permanent supportive housing facilities can exist within one mile of another or an emergency shelter, and that no more than 10 persons at a time can occupy that, that facility. And then emergency housing, it's, it's no emergency shelter should be located within a half mile of another with a max occupancy of 50. So you can imagine that if we had a permanent supportive housing facility and with, that could only house 10 people, and you couldn't put another one within a mile of it, we'd, we'd pretty quickly run up against the issue of being able to demonstrate we have a capacity for 401 beds of, of that housing. Or I guess it's actually 499 for permanent supportive, supportive housing. So we propose to just clean it up, follow Commerce's recommendations, and remove the spacing and occupancy requirements. And that also includes the, both, both types must be located within a half mile walking distance of a transit stop. And on face value, that sort of makes sense, but when you think about where transit stops exist in the city, it's really only on a few, you know, it'd be 228th and a few other corridors, and that's it. So again, you really quickly limit the areas where these could exist. And we need to demonstrate we have capacity for 401 and 499 of these units. So I guess the question posed to the commission is, does it make sense to you to remove those spacing and occupancy requirements per staff's recommendation?
So I, two, two questions that I have. Is it, is it necessary to remove both? And I say that, if you remove the occupancy, would you then be able to demonstrate with the spacing that you could still meet the numbers? And I, I guess the.
I see what you're gonna say.
Well, I mean, it, it feels like, I don't want it to sound, it feels like we're being told by the state what to do and we're saying, yes, sir, instead of kind of thinking about it a little bit. And, and I know that I'm not saying that in a way that you guys haven't thought about it, but I'm just, I wanna think through, if they're requiring that we comply, we should comply, but we shouldn't just do what they say to comply. We should make sure we are complying in a way that we're satisfied we're complying.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So for example, if we took out the occupancy and we could show that we comply, then we're in compliance.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, some of those things were kind of there for a reason, and before we just started racing stuff because they told us to, and we're not deciding tonight. But I'm just suggesting that we think about, I feel like we should try to do the minimum that's necessary to comply.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, that's something we can certainly look into in the interim before we bring this back. What do you, David?
Yeah, there's a, there's a few confounding factors going on here right now. One of those is that unfortunately, the commentary from Commerce was late to us, right? We did go through the process, we did what we're supposed to do. To Commerce's credit, they've got a lot going on, they've got a lot of comprehensive plans in front of them. But apparently, there was a comment provided as from one group that didn't make its way to another group and didn't make its way to us. So we did not receive this comment until after we'd adopted our comp plan. Unfortunate. Another part of this is, is that we have limited areas in the city. We have capacity, but we have limited areas in the city where we can accommodate PSH and emergency housing. We have a affordable housing, we have a PSH and emergency allocation as part of our affordable housing allocation from King County by way of King County countywide planning policies for 401 beds and 499 units. So your question's a good one about spacing versus density is like, you know, could you accommodate it if you removed the spacing but maintain the, the headcount sort of limit, Or the other way? One or the other?
Or whatever.
Right. The, the hardest one, I think, out of all those is the proximity to transit, because that really narrows it down where you can put them, because we have one transit line. Now, another thing to keep in mind is that under the prior, I'm trying to find and remember the name of this bill, I just had it open here a minute ago, under HB 1590 from like 2019, which is the Health Through Housing Bill, that resulted in a 1% sales tax to be collected by the county for the purpose of permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing. They have been collecting funds and we've been meeting with them. And this is sort of the practicality side of what does this mean? And we have been probing them to ask about, well, they're required to, for the share of a local jurisdiction, the county is required to kick back 30% or spend 30% back in that community. However, Sammamish really doesn't have anywhere that's attractive, even with our comp plan and zoning changes, to build any of these facilities. So from the practical side, it is highly unlikely that we would see any of these facilities built in the reasonable horizon in Sammamish. I'm just saying that. Now, there's another factor to all of this, and I'm trying to remember what this one was as well. The Senate is currently under consideration of Senate Bill 5148, which would empower Commerce significantly to pull in cities who they find noncompliant. So we need to, we have a choice now, where we can go through this step now before 5148 is passed, and it's likely that it will pass, or we can do, and we, we really, our goal right now is to, to be compliant while we are in control of it. Because if we go down the road and we don't make changes that are needed, and Commerce writes us another letter and says, hey, we don't think you're compliant, it is highly likely that Commerce would recall our comprehensive plan, recall our comprehensive plan housing element, and do a comprehensive audit of our comprehensive plan housing element, and then give us direction on what needs to be changed to be compliant. And they are empowered to go further than that by this bill. So if you haven't read SB 5148, it's worth a read. You might want to drink some coffee. But my point here is, is that there are many drivers and reasons why we're bringing this back to you, is that we are wanting to take this opportunity while we're in control of it to show how we're gonna be compliant. So doing the, the study to try and understand the, the acreage and the spacing is a really good start to understanding that, and it's foundational work. But wanted to explain the, the context of this a little more.
Yeah, I, I, time is of the essence, it sounds like, so I get that. I would say though, I think it's certainly from our side of it, I think it's always healthy to, in the process of what we do, to not just do what we're told, but to challenge it a little bit along the way. And for you guys, that means more work, so you don't like it, I get that. But for the community, it's important that we don't just roll over every single time. We think about it and make sure that what we're doing actually makes sense for us and, and absolutely be compliant, yes. Now, if time is a problem, then we need to deal with that, I get that. But I just think that it's our obligation as a commission and as the council to look with a watchful eye on things we're being told to do by the state and make sure that we're doing what we are required to do, but not just doing what they say without challenging a little bit. That's healthy. So for what it's worth. Anybody else? Go ahead, Ajay.
Before I go, how many more slides do you have?
This is it. This is the last of the slides.
Can I have a question, extension of 15 minutes for at 8:30?
Let's make it a half hour.
Yeah, we have one more quickish thing, but.
Okay. A second. Move to a second to extend to nine. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no, thank you.
Okay. So by the definition that you've given here, this, this read very close to the fact that the PSHS would be built close to 228th. Then why is it that we are trying to take that asterisk point about being half a mile away from this one? Because anyway, the transit is gonna take care of that, isn't it?
Well, I think it is with, of each other, but also I think we want to keep in play areas like the bonus parcels that we talked about during the comp plan, like religious, religious or publicly owned parcels that may be able to support some of these facilities might not be on 228th. So if we have that, that limitation, those would immediately be ruled out from our capacity, our being able to show that as capacity. So I think it makes sense for us to get rid of that one, so we can retain the bonus parcels that aren't right on 228th.
Got it, got it. Because I thought people who are gonna come to the PSHS would probably be dependent on transit.
Yeah, I follow the logic completely, that they would probably be benefited most by being near transit.
Yeah, exactly.
But our goal is more to demonstrate we have capacity, because as David said, the reality is we're probably not going to be getting these types of facilities anytime soon. So it's more for us like a, a paper exercise of, we can accommodate them if it needed to happen, here's where we could do it.
Got it. And we'll hope that sound transit extends to the PSHS.
There we go, yeah. Anything else?
So I, I think if we, you know, take away one of the limitations, it would be the distance. I'm just thinking in my mind, you end up with the option to have two group homes on the same block, just because, just because, and they're within a half mile of transit. You would exclude them because they'd be too close to each other. And then particularly for the smaller units, like a group home, you're gonna be limited by how much floor space you have, not, not anything else. I guess the flip side is if someone wanted to construct a facility at one of the bonus parcels, that would be totally different, different show. So I'm just throwing those in for thought. I think particularly since with transit issues, putting in the exclusion of, of distance between facilities seems pretty limiting, because there are only limited places that they could really go. Don't feel as strongly about the limitations on number of residents. But to David's point, we're sticking our neck out a little bit if we push back too hard, so. If they're both taken away, I'm not, I wouldn't object.
Anything else?
Let's go to the last one.
So this was actually, this was the last of this topic, so it would be the third agenda item, which I'm happy to move on to. Lickety split.
While, while you're moving on, I wanted to just kind of, in line with what Chair Baughman said, we, you know, we have pushed back quite a bit on Commerce, on a lot of their comments. We, the letter, I think, was, how many pages when we first got it?
A lot.
And.
Five, six.
We worked through all of it, and that is the one item that we were left with at the very end. And it has simply to do with, I think, geospatial math. So we'll work on that and, and figure out exactly where we stand and see exactly what we need to. I also want to highlight that we do still have many requirements related to those uses that retain, that are retained, that Commerce also commented on, but that we did retain, and we did work with our legal counsel to, to understand where the line was that we could hold. So we're, we're working on that. We're, we're here, I hear what you say, I appreciate what you say, and we're working on that.
Great. Sammy, if you want to bounce to you, feel free. Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Sam. Yeah.
It was.
He's gonna come back, folks.
Nice to have you here, Sam.
Yeah.
All right, see you next time.
All right, so for the last agenda item, we have two items relating to how the planning commission is governed, one by its bylaws, and then the second by the SMC. Let's start with the, the proposed changes to the SMC. The goal here is really to align what's in the code that governs the commission with how we actually function. And our proposal here is to remove some outdated language. Sorry, it's kind of jumping on me. But under duties and responsibilities, there are some that, I mean, we just, we haven't done. And as a little background, this code language comes all, it dates all the way back to 2003, and with the initial adoption of the ordinance to approve a planning commission. So it hasn't changed since then. I think at the time, some of these things made more sense because we weren't, we didn't have as a robust staff. You know, it was just, it was just a different time. So the first one that we, we propose removing is the planning commission shall periodically review the comprehensive plan and sort of monitor the city's development. That's something that, that doesn't occur. We do have, go ahead. Oh, I was gonna say, the, the, the commission does review the city's comprehensive plan during periodic review cycles or at the, or at council's direction, but it's really not, it hasn't been the role of the planning commission to monitor the plan and then go make sure development is meeting it. So we propose removing that. The, the next item is that clarifying the language of what the commission does. So we propose adding that the commission make recommendations on items relating to the comprehensive plan or land use ordinances and regulations as directed by the city council work plan. So the idea here is really centering it, the commission works at the behest of the council and on the items that the council directs, and that's when you would make recommendations on the development regs in the comp plan. The commission has not maintained a liaison with other planning, east side planning agencies, so let's go ahead and remove that one. And I don't think we, any of us have the capacity to do that. The next is the planning commission shall provide at least monthly communications to the council. We don't think this is necessary, because the council directs you to work on things. When you make recommendations to them, we provide a letter and your recommendation, and they also have access to you. So we think we can remove that. And then again, the last section of this chapter is just kind of reiterating those comprehensive plan responsibilities of monitoring development within the city. So those are the proposed changes to 2.6. David?
I will say that, that monitoring development in the city is a big factor going forward with our comprehensive plan. We did include that in the comp plan. We will be doing that, and we will be bringing reports to the commission and the council going forward at a minimum annually on what we're seeing. We want to make sure to keep the commission informed about the type of development we're seeing, the trends we're seeing. We want to basically keep you updated as to whether any of your middle housing regulations are working. So, you know, I think that's something we're taking in stride. We are required to do this for the State Department of Commerce as well, so we have to do it anyway. So might as well take advantage of that and bring it to the commission and make sure you're all kept in the loop. I think one other thing to, to kind of highlight here is that the, you know, the commission has a very significant role and responsibility in guiding and forming policy and regulation for the city council. However, the city's work plan and budget. However, the city's work plan and budget is completely driven by the city council's priorities and work plan. So consequently, you know, we don't have staff or resources available to take on work that is not identified and assigned by the work plan and budget process. So that's one of our challenges and why we're wanting to kind of face reality here and refine down what the mission statement really is under the duties and responsibilities.
Thoughts, questions?
At least once a month, more than that, somebody says to me, "Yeah, you're still involved in the city, aren't you? Can't you take care of this, can't you do?" And frankly, I always just say, "I have no authority whatsoever to talk to the city council." So I think that's perfect.
Great. It just sort of makes sense.
But I also want to highlight that, you know, it is completely appropriate and, you know, if you had the time or, you know, had the reason to connect with city council members on a one-to-one basis, you know, that, giving them the feedback on some of the things you're seeing and hearing, you are eyes and ears for them, and I think that that would be well received on their part. It's a matter of how do we fit it into our lives?
I also think it's worth noting that in 2003, trying to imagine exactly what things were like in 2003, but our meetings were not posted on YouTube within, you know, 24 hours. Right, you could go through the list of those kinds of changes that probably are a reflection of why some of this, I mean, reporting and liaison and stuff. I mean, now that's less of an issue because of our, sometimes clunky, but sometimes useful technology. So I think that makes it even more appropriate.
Great. So I'll move on to the bylaws. The changes here, well, the first is very minor, but we want to just change the bylaws to say that the director, deputy director, or designee from the community development can provide regular reports either verbally and writing. David and Matt are here all the time, so we're well covered. The other item is we've been directed by the city manager's office to bring, help bring all of the city's commissions and council into alignment around practices for public comment. So we are one of five. We have the arts commission, human services, parks, sustainability commission, and the planning commission. And we're the, kind of the outlier in the way that we handle public comment with having a non-agenda and agenda and having a different comment length. We're the only one that has an extended comment period. So the city manager would like us to unify the practice and the way we're proposing doing that is in the bylaws say that we'll follow the public comment practices established by the city clerk and used by the council. So if they change theirs, if they go to five minutes, we'll just, ours will automatically change as well. I'll note that the chair always has the discretion to allow for longer comment periods by modifying the meeting's agenda. If it's a really hot topic and we want to have an extra comment period, that can certainly still happen. But this was the direction we received, so we want to bring it for you and hear what you think.
So can we just clarify? That means we would be doing a single public comment period at the beginning?
Correct.
It would be three minutes per person. I forget if there's an organization differential there, but three minutes per person. And then we would still have, obviously, public hearing, public comment, and so that would be maintained. I don't know if their time limits are different.
It's also three minutes for public hearings. Oh, can't promote David?
I also wanted to add on to this one that, you know, we, in reading the public comment this evening, and I've heard this comment before, that, you know, there's interest in making sure that we're seeing the written comment and that we're using it. And really, I want to reiterate that that comment received as part of the commission or council proceedings is for the commission or council, that staff are reading it and analyzing it, but staff are not in a position to debate comment by way of a matrix of some sort. That's just not something that we are staffed or equipped to do. So we will not be doing that. But however, I did want to try to jump in here and share my screen. One thing that we will be doing is making some changes to our, I was going to show you all, just so that people can see. If you could promote me, that'd be great. There we go. Let's see here. Thank you.
What was I saying about technology?
And I'll go ahead and share my screen. So thank you. So you could see here, this is, if you could move that bar down, yeah. You can see up here, this is the city's civic webpage. I'm trying to find, there it is, this is lag, like Evan was saying. So if I go over here to the sixth, right, I can choose the, and this is really for the public, and I think it's instructional. If my cursor would just move, it's frozen. Evan, how do you make this work?
It's the worst, I don't know. It's just terrible.
Okay, anyway, up in the upper bar, you could see where it says document center. And under the document center, if you click on the document center, it takes you to a page where if you scroll down in the document center, if I could actually control my.
Oh, that's good, that's a good note.
You could see this is supplemental materials for packets. And if you open up the supplemental materials for packets, you can go to the year, and then you can go to the planning commission, and then I'll have to drag the bar down again, and I'm sorry, this is taking longer than I wanted to. But you'll see the February 20th meeting, and then you can see down here where it says public comments, and all the public comments are listed. Here's the staff presentation from that meeting. One of the things that we're going to be doing is we're going to be linking, if I go back to this page again, here I go. And if you were to go to the meeting here after the fact, let me actually go back one second. I just want to make sure that the public sees this and is aware of what we're doing. So if I go to the February 20th meeting in Civic Web, you can see how we have agenda, minutes, and now video, thanks to one of our public commenters about adding the video. We're going to be adding another tab here that is public comments and another tab that is the staff presentation that basically just links you to that other folder, so you don't have to go do such a deep dive. So we wanted to facilitate floating the public comments to the surface so that the commission, the council, the staff, anybody who's interested can easily find those public comments that have been received, and they're not hidden in another layer. So I just wanted you all to be aware. We did, we do read the public comments, I did see that one, and I did want to respond to some changes we're going to be making.
Thank you so much for doing that, because it was something that I keep thinking about, what do we do with these public comments? But the next step that I'm going to ask, that truly, what do we do with them? I have been here for a year now. I know Paul brings up the same topic almost every week, every meeting. What do we do with them? Do we say to Paul, "Just keep repeating it, we will keep ignoring you"? Or are we going to say to Paul, "At one point in time, this will be in the agenda, and we will address it, and we will tell you we're going to do it", or we're going to say, "Paul, don't bother anymore"?
Yeah, so if it's off-topic comment, file it away. Be aware, it's raising awareness about things in the community. I think there's value in that, just, you know, context. If it's on-topic comment, and you're in the midst of a hearing or you're giving feedback to staff on what to bring back for a hearing, and you hear something that you find valuable and you want to ask staff to consider it, and you have three friends that will agree with you on that, then we will proceed to, you know, make changes accordingly. The key is the three friends. Then that's direction. And if you are making a motion to the council on something, and then there was some comment that came up that you didn't quite find warranted to change the recommendation or you had, didn't have three, you know, the three friends didn't necessarily agree, but the commission finds that the council should really pay attention to these other comments that were really important but didn't quite get to the point of triggering us to do something different, that you would then say that, hey, we're recommending this to the council, but we're also asking the staff to please include some language in the recommendation around those public comments, that the council pay attention to those comments. Because those are something that the council might want to immediately be aware of, that, hey, there's these other perspectives or other things out there. Now, I will say that we have responded to the comment that Mr. Stickney has. I've had conversations with Mr. Stickney. I respect and understand his perspective. However, there are many reasons why the city does not control or build what is actually being produced in the city. You know, we have development regulations, we have incentives, we can try and use sticks and carrots and partnerships to, it's this Pam Stewart thing, partners, partnerships, anyway, whatever it is. So my point there is that, you know, we have responded, and commenters do continue to comment on things, and I understand, and they're passionate about them, and they're educated on them. However, that doesn't mean that we're going to do anything different.
Unless directed by the council.
And even one council member requires three friends.
If I have to have three friends, I'm in trouble.
Just before we leave this topic here and kind of wrap up, Chair Baughman, you pointed out a good, a few good things, particularly that this table is well out of date now and recommended. Oh, you stopped sharing, sorry. The table defining the terms of positions for planning commissioners in 2.6 is out of date. We can scrub that and make sure everything is in alignment and up to date, so.
Yeah, or delete it and do something that doesn't depend on the dates. Right, so we don't have to update it all the time.
That's it for us.
Any other comments? I would encourage everybody to, if you didn't take a minute, and just kind of read through the, some of the bylaws. I, because I read through them, you know, earlier for this discussion, and I've seen them, you know, four or five times, let's say, and there were certain things I ran across and I went, oh, I forgot that that was in there. So it's worth a five-minute read every once in a while.
Evan, could you give us an update on the long-term calendar dates? Not content, but you had mentioned in a previous meeting the possibility of an August meeting.
Yeah, so we're working on our town center plan and code amendment project, which has lots of ups and downs and lots of comment and lots of interested people, and we really appreciate all the comment everyone's giving us. However, that is, you know, adding some additional work to that project, which is, you know, a good thing. We want to make sure we're engaged in the community. So one of the things we're looking at is where do we have some elasticity in that project? And I think we initially, and I don't know if Matt has any dates that he's aware of, but we were looking at the first Thursday in August or potentially the last Thursday in August. We are narrowing that down and hope to have an answer on that here very soon.
In addition to that, we were initially looking at like a date later this month, but I think the next opportunity to kind of have a discussion about the town center won't be until April. David, were we thinking the first week or the first meeting in April, or?
Yeah, we're currently rebooting the whole calendar right now, just to make sure we've got everything lined up, including the commission's calendar, the council's calendar, and meeting all of our timeline requirements under state law for SEIS work. So we hope to have a report out on that soon. I, you know, there's a lot going on there.
Yeah. So there was, right now, we were planning a workshop towards the end of April, and then coming back to the planning commission that first week of May for another discussion and to review the actual draft of the SEIS. But we will need to update that, and I think within the next week we should be able to provide more information in that regard. We can send an email.
All right. Thanks for the discussion this evening, David, Evan. Appreciate it. Let's move on to public comment. This is a gender-related public comment. Would anybody like to make a gender-related public comment?
Sitting there a long time, it gets stiff. Hello, planning commissioners, Paul Stickney, Sam Amish. Enjoyed the meeting, lots of good topics. And for fun, tonight, I'm going to hedge my comment. Oh, no, never mind, okay. I took a class for my continuing education a couple of months ago, maybe like four to five months ago, from a guy who's been an appraiser for a long, long time. I've known him a long time. His name is Gary Hagar, and he's on, you know, Mercer Island. Sort of a fun, outspoken guy, lots of opinionated stuff. He deals with state laws and things. He was involved in Missing Middle as a consultant, et cetera. But he sent out a map as an update, and I won't take it as a fact, but he said, wow, and this is to all the people who took his two-day class, which was a good class, by the way. It was on, you know, Missing Middle more from a state perspective, not so much a, you know, jurisdictional perspective. But he sent out a graph that showed what Bellevue has planned and how much land was involved, and up to nine units per site, and that allegedly Redmond is looking at potentially allowing limited commercial on every lot in the city. And with some sarcasm, he said, "Won't the people on Education Hill and along, you know, Westlake, Sam Amish love that"? But the point is that there is a lot of push in other jurisdictions, and I think if we manage what we do well in our centers and have less push in the neighborhoods and less the neighborhoods want it, I think that is, if people were starting to become aware of what's really happening with this, he just sent this. I said, oh, it's good timing, I'll mention this tonight. But, okay, a couple other things. I liked the comment of the 1920 house. And I love the older houses, by the way, in my real estate, mostly back in the state of Montana, less here, some here, Western Market, a few places. But if you're going to razz the old house, you have to keep at least the nine-foot ceilings and the cove ceiling and the plumbed window weights. I love those windows of the old days that were so easy to use because they had lead weights on both sides that helped you open them up. But there is a lot of great character in a lot of that vintage of housing. And I'm just doing kind of a couple shotgun comments here. The, talking about the long discussion on subdivision and hearing examiner. The 800-pound gorilla in the room is what's the code at the time of application, end of story, period, and stop. Anything that happens after that is irrelevant, in my opinion. So there's nothing to change. It's just your codes are your codes on the day of application, end of story. So there's really not that much for a council to attempt to tweak and alter, even if there's a lot of feelings in five or seven years. They didn't exist then. So that's an easy way to look at it. And I think Sam Amish does a better-than-average job at being sure that codes are followed to the letter of the law across the board more than most jurisdictions. So it may not be what you want five, seven, eight years later in time, but it is what it was at the time it was applied for. So that's just, I think, a simple way to take a look at that. On the affordable housing fee in lieu, if you get to 10 lots, I think we've talked about this before, but think about this. If somebody builds 10 $2 million houses that are maybe 25 to 2700 square feet, one has to be at 80% affordability. That is a $500,000 house. So that is a million five spread across nine lots. So that is a significant fee. I'll just say it out loud, something to consider. And my last comment. And, and my last comment gets back to the hedge and the fence and all that. I was wondering, and you guys covered a lot, I'm not trying to redo it, but just one thought that I didn't hear, and maybe it's in there. I wonder if a way to deal with the rockeries and the fencing and all that is to take, potentially a alternative, is to take an average grade of the rockery and build up from that. You know, a lot of people do, cities and jurisdictions do ABE, average above-grade elevation on siding a house, and maybe on a rockery, if it's going up a steep slope or doing this, I, I don't know that that has value. But anyway, those are just a couple comments. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody online?
We have one hand raised online. Mary, I am going to promote you now.
Good evening again. Thanks for the time to talk. Back in the beginning, when you were talking about hedges or trees, there was some good Ajay, I think, raised it about, should we say, native plants? I've read some articles recently about like the arboveda paramodalis, which are often used and not native, that they really light on fire where the cedars, maybe native or not, are less. So, I always think of those as green fence posts. Also, when we were changing the development regs, a few years ago, I walked around and took a bunch of pictures with a, a two-by-four with LeBron James' face on it to show his height, and to have a four-foot retaining wall, which you don't need a permit for, and a six-foot fence, you end up with 12 feet, which is really pretty high. So, I liked what David Pyle had said about use the geometry of the situation about where the other neighbors are and where the other windows are to try to figure out a solution that works for all people. And I do believe, like Mark Baughman said, kind of the person that gets there first, it was there before the people came, so they maybe get to have the, their first say. On the four-inch, four-foot sidewall, I'll repeat something I heard from Mark Cross, who was on council and also been doing permitting for 40 years. Whenever you have something that's really close to a side yard, you want to be able to paint the siding, or remove the siding, or fix it, or fix the window, or have a fireman go and get your kids out of the window. For me, I know that I need to be able to roll my yardway spin around, and if I can't maneuver my yardway spin or my mower, whatever size it is, I just don't have enough room, and I think four feet's a little bit too narrow, so I would go to at least five. But I think having those concepts is important. If you've never heard, the hearing examiner, they are awesome. For the trail, they read 8,000 pages and knew what pages had been duplicated. They look at everything. They are the best people and the best training and a very unique sort of character for doing that, so I totally agree with that. I really liked all the things and the discussions on the fee and lieu for housing. We had talked about, does a garage count as square footage? And then should we go from the 1,000 to 1,500 for the fee and lieu? And I don't know if that includes garages or not. I'm not really sure where I stand on that. I think that's just a good question to ask. And then I wanted to spend the remainder of my time talking about public comment. Paul's been doing stuff about a year and a half longer than me publicly, and so I've been through multiple planning commissions, and I will say that you guys are pretty respected because there are multiple council members that will go back and listen to your meetings and, or attend them remotely and, and talk about them. So, what you do is very highly important. If it's, and what was said tonight versus what's written is different. If you're really going to use like council rules and procedures, I believe like two council members can put something on or take something off, or three. It doesn't have to be a minimum of a, a majority of them. Also, when you have public comment only at the beginning, like tonight, I wouldn't even known what the second workshop was going to talk about, so there would be no way to talk about that, and then I'd have to talk at the next meeting, and then I wouldn't be able to do that. And just like having one public comment really makes it hard. Also, a lot of times with the planning commission, you're doing what I will call studies or workshops. You're really thinking, like the last meeting you had was a really good example, and you all had ideas and input and questions that you asked, and that's really important to hear. And then when you've spent as much time as Paul and I have trying to get certain things moved forward, you learn a lot, and I think some of the things that we can offer in answering questions or relating stories or talking about a specific area that maybe you don't know anything about in the city, even if you're a really good consultant, or like I've spoken with, with Sam Dunlap before, and he's great, they just don't know the area that you live in, so sometimes that's really important. So, I think it really is important to have the three-minute comment before. I like it being non-agenda because then you can bring up things, bring up past things, bring up training materials. You can even do a video that can be replayed, because James Eastman did that once, and that way it's recorded, so other people can watch it. And then you need to be able to speak at the end because there's just so many things that you guys cover. Like tonight, you had three topics, and I actually write a list of things to try to cover those. And to be able to have this seven minutes, you don't have to rush every word, and you can think about it. You can respond to things. You can bring up analogies and other things. So, I think that's really important. And there have been multiple past commissions that said, "You know, we're the only people that do the seven minutes. Should we do that or not?" And in every time, they said, "We do respect the public comment that we get. We like it. We don't want to cut them short." I don't hear too many people that do the five-minute organization thing, and if they do that, then there's usually just two people, so they could talk anyway. But I think you need to keep it, and if you want to cut it down, then make the second one three minutes. The other thing is, is if you're going to follow council policy for their study sessions, the public comment comes at the end of the meeting, whereas for normal meetings, it comes right at the beginning. And it's, it's important to have it right at the beginning because if people just want to come and comment and leave and not spend their whole evening there, then they can do that, because in the old days, they used to bury it down, and you had to wait two, three, four, or five hours to talk, and it was just incredibly hard for people. So, we've been through a lot of public comment. If you end up with a meeting, perhaps the last one where people are talking on non-agenda during non-agenda, you can stop them from doing that by just interrupting them. And then if you have too many people and your meeting's going to go really long, you can say, you know, "We have a maximum of 30 minutes for public comment," which I believe the current council does. And I remember back in prior councils, they would limit it to an hour because they had like end control on some other meetings that were really hot, and they knew they just couldn't take them. So, you can ask people that they share their time, or if they're going to say the same thing, just raise their hand or whatever, and that works well. So, I'll actually give you a minute of mine back tonight. I think public comment is very important. I'd like to see it used as much as possible, and thanks to David Pyle for showing everybody how to use the documents at the portal, and I'm super happy that you'll be getting those buttons updated. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else? Anything further? Matt, Evan, David? Anybody else have anything other than moving to adjourn? Then let's move to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
I second.
So, moving second, then we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, everyone.